I just did that.
Welcome to our Tuesday meeting.
I guess I'd do it again. All right, good morning. We'll start our board meeting of October 6th, 2020.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with introductions from Pat Malone, Benton County Commissioner.
Annabelle Hadamio, Commissioner.
Xan Ojuro, Commissioner.
Joe Kirby, County Administrator.
Brian Scrooge, County Council.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
Stephanie Curtis, Executive Assistant to the County's Chair.
Thank you.
And then those that are zooming in, go ahead and introduce yourselves.
Teresa Farley, Board of Staff.
Charlie Fountain, Health Department.
Danielle Brown, Health Department.
Jen Ambul, Senior Financial Analyst.
Kate Portia, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office.
John Sauer, Member of the Public.
Erica Milo, Board Recorder.
Nancy Wise, Member of the Public.
All right.
Don Rogers, Sheriff's Office.
Morning, Don.
Brian Lee, Sheriff's Office.
Brian, also known as Caller 02. Morning, Brian. Okay, anybody else?
Commissioner Malone, Suzanne Hoffman is on. She may be having difficulties with her mute unmute button.
Okay, and we have Suzanne Hoffman. There she goes.
Yes, hi, Suzanne Hoffman, Health Department.
Well, welcome Suzanne.
Thank you.
All right, are there any announcements? Hearing none. Next item, comments from the public. Okay, don't hear anybody. And I just saw that Sarah Hartstein is with us. Good morning, Sarah.
Morning.
Next up, review and approve the agenda for today's meeting. Any changes? And I would point out that immediately after the board meeting, we will have fairly quick service district meetings. There have been no chair decisions since, I guess it's been two weeks since our last board meeting. All right, item number 5.1, update from the EOC. Generally, Brian Lee starts us off.
All right, I'll kick it off. So, morning, everyone. Just basically, EOC updated. The EOC is not activated. We're still working through, mainly CR and I, with some help from Sheriff's Office, are working through some of the donations. We had a bunch of vans and trailers and a small semi truck come through yesterday, all from Sublimity Gates and Mill City to scoop up a bunch of supplies. So, I'd say 70% or so of the donations went out the door yesterday, out to Sublimity Gates and Mill City. And they're doing basically a round the clock sort of shopping situation so evacues can go through and get what they need, week after week. And it's also going out to Lions as well. So, that's all being disseminated out, which is fantastic. We're finalizing our mask care and sheltering plan, and CR is building out some smart sheets, basically a survey for after action reporting, so we can ask team partners and internal staff, et cetera, for feedback on how things went and how to improve the process. And that's all I had to report for the EOC.
Well, Brian, I would add that I've been in contact with the Lynn County Commissioners several times in the last week or so, and they're very appreciative of how Benton County has helped them out. So, the story continues, and I think it's great that the donations that came into Benton County are going to the areas that were the hardest hit by the wildfires. So, that's a nice story.
Thank you for that.
Okay, next up is Charlie Fountain or Danielle Brown. You can fight it over who goes next.
Let me start, Danielle.
Thanks, Charlie. Good morning, everyone. Just an update regarding the Department Operations Center. We're continuing to function around the COVID response. The couple of updates that I have for you all this morning are, I've talked a couple of times about our MOUs with our community-based organizations that have contracted with Oregon Health Authority to help support the COVID response. We're still working on those. We have two that have been fully executed and are working with the rest of the CBOs to get those moved forward. As of last week, there were a total of 11, so the number is changing a little bit. But we're continuing to work on those and develop our internal processes for how those referrals will move forward with those community-based organizations to include a business associate agreement to allow for protected health information to be shared across between the Health Department and the CBOs. So, we're continuing to work on that. We did get approval last week. Charlie and I met with Joe Kirby and got approval for additional hires for contact tracing support and case investigations. We're continuing to see as those numbers increase and with Benton County now being on the watch list, we're wanting to make sure we have enough capacity for contact tracing and case investigations. So, when we have big spikes in numbers like we did a couple of weeks ago, we have the capacity to do the support around those. Kelly Volkman and the Health Navigation Team have been working with a couple of community-based organizations to do targeted testing outreach for Latinx and farmworker populations. They will be hosting two drive-through testing opportunities, one in Lynn and one in Benton County, targeting specifically this population that is underserved and has had less accessible services. I believe those are towards the end of October. There will be more information coming out about that as those get a little bit more solidified and we figure out the specifics on that. So, Kelly, I just have to give a shout out to Kelly Volkman and her team. They're doing an amazing job to try and make sure that those vulnerable populations are getting support. The final thing I'll update is the micro shelter funding that the Board of Commissioners, you guys approved a few weeks ago to go to Unity Shelter to help support the staffing for the community-placed micro shelters. We learned yesterday, Sarah Hartstein and I met with Sean Collins from Unity Shelter and learned that the capacity for the men's cold weather shelter starting November 1st will be about 15, which is down from their normal capacity of 50. Sarah, do you want to talk a little bit about that conversation since you're on, or would you like me to go ahead? Okay, I'll just go ahead. Sarah?
Go ahead, Danielle.
Okay, sorry. So, Sarah and I had a long conversation with Sean around supporting that homeless population and how to make sure that that funding that was approved gets to the correct organization for the micro shelter funding. So, we did solidify what that process will look like, and we'll move that forward as soon as we get some clarification from our internal finance on how those funds will be distributed to Unity Shelter. So, our hope is to have those funds submitted to Unity Shelter by November 1st, so when those micro shelters start being placed throughout the community, they have the staffing in place to be able to support them. So, those are my updates. Are there any questions?
I have a question. Have you been involved in the discussions about what to do in terms of having some sort of a warming site or a covered shelter site for the unhoused community, given that far from all folks will be able to be housed in the men's or women's limited congregate shelters or in the micro shelters?
Yeah, thank you for that, Commissioner. That was part of the long conversation we had with Sean yesterday, was how do we identify when, where, and what we need to have in place to stand up a warming shelter in case of a weather emergency? So, Sarah has taken the lead on coordinating that, figuring out some of those logistics. But yes, we are having that conversation and wanting to be directly involved in that.
Thank you.
We think it's important that we have some contingency plan in place.
Yeah, given that the library is closed and all of the other typical places where someone would get out of the weather are not available, it's going to be important.
Right. And the forecast for this winter looks like it's supposed to be very, very wet. So, we're going to need to make sure we're appropriately planning for that.
All right, any other questions for Danielle or Brian?
I have one more question. Are you aware of any changes to the city's plans to start posting tent camping?
I am not aware of any changes. Sarah, are you aware of any?
Paul Belata was on our briefing call this morning, and he just mentioned that the first step is conducting an inventory of where folks are camping currently, and that will help inform their plan to move forward with posting kind of in critical areas that pose a, both a human and environmental health risk, so riparian areas, et cetera. He did also mention that the city council would like them to come back and have a more fuller discussion about the phased camping posting plan.
Thank you. That helps.
I've got a question, and feel free to hop in, Charlie, if you have some information. On our Association of Oregon Counties meeting yesterday, there was a discussion of identifying hotel motel sites around the state that might be available for purchase, I think was the goal. Has Benton County been involved in that discussion?
It's primarily been me so far, and I've been keeping Danielle in the loop. We don't have a formal plan at the staff level at this point about making that kind of an acquisition, but we're watching the opportunities.
And keeping in close contact with community-based organizations that can help to manage that, if that's the decision we want to move forward.
Yep, yep.
All right, if there's nothing else for Danielle, Charlie, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners. So, as Danielle indicated, our numbers continue to climb, and so that plus the just ongoing fatigue and diversion of regular public health staff who've not been able to do their regular programming for many months now led to the request for some new dedicated full-time case investigators. And so, I want to thank Joe. Thank you guys very much for the ability to hire these seven new case investigators. Char and the CD core team are actually starting interviews today, so we anticipate being able to get people onboard very quickly and get them trained up. Again, it will take, even after they come onboard, we have to get computers and phones for those people, but IT has been incredibly quick and very responsive for those requests. So, thanks to them for that. But it does take a few weeks to get folks up and working completely independently and up to speed. So, as indicated earlier, starting today, we actually, over the weekend, we started getting mutual aid assistance from OHA, and we'll be getting more assistance from at least one other county. We did a request to several counties, unfortunately. Almost all of those had had similar bumps in cases following Labor Day, and so the spare capacity around the state is somewhat limited. But Monmouth County was very generous, and it's going to be able to provide us some assistance for a few weeks, as well as OHA, until we have our new capacity up and running. The other counties will watch and see how their flow goes, and we'll provide assistance if possible. But overall, our numbers do increase. The previous two weeks, we were just under an average of about four cases a day. Now, we're up around five. So, that pushes things, and the contact numbers go up with that. So, the number of people that we're monitoring on a daily basis and the contacts we're investigating goes up along with that. Good news is that our lab return pace has improved.
Go ahead.
It was not bad before. We were running around two, two and a half days for return of labs on average. So, it's up just a little bit from late August. We're back down below two days average return now. So, that's very good news. Lab capacity seems very responsive. To address the watch list specifically, again, that metric that got us on the watch list is that sporadic case rate. So, it's cases per 100,000 that we cannot link directly back to a known prior case. With a lot of traveling and holidays, with a lot of traveling of people moving into town, increased socialization, things like that, it makes it very challenging to do that. The two weeks that got us onto the watch list, our sporadic case rate was over 55 per 100,000, and the governor's line is 50 per 100,000 for that watch list. But this is a running proportion, and so we just got the numbers yesterday for the most recent two weeks, which still includes one week of those two that got us on the watch list, and it is down to 51.9, so we're just barely over. But it's sort of moot at this point because when you're on the watch list, you're on for a minimum of three weeks. So, we got till middle of October, but we're moving in the right direction, at least should be. So, we're looking, watching that, working really hard on that. The other factor in the watch list potentially, not at the moment, but potentially is around schools and the status of the K-3 small schools and rural schools that are still operating. I'm actually going to ask Sarah to step in for a moment and address the status. She and Peter are leading our school monitoring team. Sarah, are you still available?
I am. Really quickly, as Charlie mentioned, the schools that are currently allowed to open under ODE exceptions are those that are considered remote and rural, and also those that are, if they're interested in K through 3 in-person instruction. So, we do have schools that are operating under both of those exceptions. The current metrics, although they're worsening, don't impact their ability to stay open necessarily. And I say necessarily because what's been communicated to us from ODE and OHA is that we will need to make sure that we're working very closely with those schools to make sure it's safe for them to stay open. We tried to get some clarity from ODE yesterday about what it means to be on the watch list with those schools that are in person, and their initial response was it shouldn't impact their ability to stay open. Please continue to work with each of those schools and make kind of case-by-case decisions, although they will be meeting this afternoon and will give us an official response, hopefully later today or tomorrow morning. The metrics prevent schools that are not currently open under those exceptions from opening.
So, Corvallis School District, for instance, had been contemplating opening some K-3, but at this point, that is uncertain?
Corvallis School District would need to have, Benton County, in order for schools to open who have not opened yet, we will need to have three weeks of good metrics for them to open the K through 3 in person. And so, currently, those who are certainly open would not be able to open.
And many of those that are not open also have to meet multiple county statistics? For instance, Corvallis has to meet Lynn. I mean, Lynn County also has to meet the trends?
If they have more than 10% of their student or staff population who are coming from another county, they would have to meet the other county's metrics.
Thank you.
Annabelle?
I have a question regarding some of the comments to the editor and in the newspaper regarding the, actually believe that for many people that have written, is that the university's opening has created this problem. Who's taking charge of that kind of response to those comments, whether they're valid or not?
Excellent question, Commissioner. The JIC team works really, it is truly a joint information team, working with the city, with OSU, with the other communities. They're coordinating extremely closely with Steve Clark and the OSU information folks. You know, as indicated before OSU opened, there's no question that just adding more population to Benton County will add cases. There's also just the behavior of young adults who have not seen each other for a while. Actually, I have quite a bit of sympathy for these poor freshmen, who their entire, you know, senior parties and graduation and senior year sort of got pulled out from under them, and, you know, they've been looking forward to attending university, and as we all did, making new friends, and they're feeling away from their parents. And so, OSU is working really hard on their code of conduct communication with students. We work really hard with them on that. There's a lot of on-campus information going out, a lot of reminders, as well as interventions when there have been breaches.
Okay, I had an OSU question, Charlie. I know they have some capacity for contact tracing. How is their efforts and the county's efforts being coordinated?
Yeah, another really good question. So, really tightly coordinated. So, the OSU contact tracers do not work independently. Our team does all of the case investigation of all the new cases that come in, but then that day-to-day monitoring of OSU students is turned over to a team. They meet, they attend our twice-a-week contact tracing meetings with our team. They're considered part of our team, but they're supervised at OSU. But they are doing the day-to-day monitoring, making sure that the health checks are done, that those students are getting food and their other needs in their rooms, so they can maintain their isolation or quarantine. You know, there was lots and lots of planning that went into this over the summer, and I'm really pleased to say that our coordination with OSU continues very strongly. The other thing I'll add about OSU is actually spending a really significant amount of time on working with Lane County and OHA, and the governor's office, still on athletics with Division 1 football and then the women's basketball scheduled to start. They've got aggressive testing going on, and they have set up completely independent laboratory systems. It's not sapping any capacity from the medical laboratory system for them to do their testing, which is really good news. They work very, very closely with our Communicable Disease Team, but there's also really, really very close couple of times a week meetings between Lane County, Benton County, OHA, and the two athletic departments. They're going to require some state waivers. Those are in front of the governor's office now, because they just, they cannot put even two teams of players, coaches, and trainers on a football field and stay under the 250 capacity limit in the governor's current guidance. And that does not include things like professional scouts, TV crews, other people that are required for Division 1 football. And so, they've come up with some numbers and some ways to separate different groups of people. That's in front of it. Same sort of thing with basketball. No way that they can play a game in Gill with 100 people indoors. And so, we're working with them very closely on plans for cohorting different groups of people within those size limits, how they will do movement of folks and control those populations within that. But there's a lot of detailed planning going on with that.
Great, thank you. Annabelle?
I have one more follow-up, Charlie, and it's related to my first question. I just want to know, I know the Greeks have kind of independent housing and stuff, so are they cooperating? The Greek system?
Overall, I would say yes. You know, there's individuals, and we've always had those, who are resistant to contact tracing, to the type of interviewing, the type of information we need. You know, OSU, again, is really standing behind that with code of conduct. We've had a couple of meetings with all of the Greek chapter presidents, and I would say, without exception, the officers have been very understanding, very supportive in when we need that help within the houses. They've been very helpful, but there are, of course, some individual differences with levels of cooperation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
That's all I have. Unless there are more questions?
Well, I've got one. I heard on the news this morning about Oregon receiving equipment supplies for rapid testing. Are you familiar with that? And if you are, maybe explain how that would fit into our testing system?
Yeah, this has been under discussion in both CLOCD, Communicable Disease Committee, and CLO in general. There is a lot of planning going on this week about how those will be used, how they'll actually be interpreted. It is a different kind of rapid test than we've been using previously, and so the Oregon Health Authority epidemiologists are looking very closely at the lab specifications for that, how those fit in with our current investigative guidelines. It is a work in pro- It is a work in progress, I'll put it that way, and I don't really, I don't feel like any of us in my position are in a position yet to say how those will actually be used in our regions or in our specific jurisdictions until we have a little bit more scientific information and we have a fully developed statewide plan, but it's coming fast.
Okay, thank you. If there's no other questions, we'll move on, maybe get a communications report from Alyssa Rasch.
Good morning, Commissioner. Malia is out today, so I am happy to be providing an update for the Joint Information Center. Last week, we were added to the governor's watch list on Friday. The JIC drafted and shared press releases, talking points, and social media posts, all of which were translated into Spanish as well. We reselled the Friday Daily video because it's normally filmed at 11:30, and the press release from the governor came out at 1:00. So we called John back and retell the segment of the Friday Daily video to announce that we had been added to the watch list and what that meant for Benton County. We also made website updates and social media, oh, sorry, and sent our talking points to the phone bank. The Spanish-language video on Monday was, discussed our addition to the watch list and used our talking points that had been translated into Spanish, and we did field a few media requests. For the month of October, we will have specific topics dedicated to our daily videos, so Mondays will continue to be our Spanish video. Tuesdays are generally kind of our open topic day. A lot of the time, I'm doing the video that day, and the video is themed something around what was discussed in the board meeting. Wednesdays will be about wildfire recovery. Thursdays will be flu shot and harm reduction, and Fridays will be our public health metrics because that's when it comes out to the public. This week, we are in our second rotation for Team B in the JIC, and they will be finalizing our COVID-19 and flu messaging, reviewing our COVID-19 website for content updates, finalizing talking points on quarantine pods and other harm reduction materials, and working on some messaging about upcoming get-togethers and gatherings during the holidays.
Well, from what I've seen, the information that's out on Benton County being added to the watch list was fairly positive, that this wasn't a punishment, this was, it looks like you need some help to get your numbers down, and I think that, actually, I think that'll be helpful in the long run to get people's attention that, oh, it's, I think there's always slippage back into, well, things are kind of normal, I can, no, they're not normal, and we need to continue the, being careful, and that's the only way we're going to be successful, and the JIC's efforts have, I think, been really, really helpful, so...
Thank you so much for that. We definitely worked hard to get across the gravity of the situation while also making sure that people understood that there's a path forward.
Yep.
I think that's really important because, you know, going back to my original question around Oregon State and how they were handling students coming on campus, there was a lot of negative from citizens, not only in the paper, but, you know, out in the open, so just reminding them that being on the watch list is to help us get through that and getting more resources to be able to do the work we need to do. And it's not necessarily, we're not going to go to jail for that, but it is important, and we're on top of it.
Definitely.
I have a quick question. Several weeks ago now, I was approached by CW Nelson, our Veteran Services Officer, who wanted to know if he could, you could work with him to promote Veteran Services. Has that happened yet?
It has not. I will reconnect with him, though.
Okay. I know that, given the closure, it's much more difficult for them to reach out to all of the veterans in the community the way they normally do, and they would really love to be able to work with you to highlight the services the county provides in that arena.
For sure, and we're happy to help them amplify that.
Well, make sure you give our thanks to your team for the hard efforts and the difficult job of communicating accurate information, because that's, that's the only way we're going to be successful.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
And I'm very excited to hear that the team rotation is working and that teams are gelling that way.
Yes, it's going very well.
I'm not sure if the ice hockey image of substituting as the game goes on is, people have that image, but that, I think that's, that kind of rotation is critical because we're in it for the long haul here, so I'm glad to hear that that's, that there's been a shift change. Anything else for the EOC, DOC folks? I see we have George Looney, and he's going to give us good news on the budget. Is that, do I have that right, George?
Actually, Commissioner, I was just listening. I am just starting to prepare the financial report and prepare, you know, present that next week. But I wanted to make sure there wasn't something going on that I wasn't aware of, so I'm just listening at this point.
Okay, but you did get the message that we want good news.
I will provide that.
Okay, thanks, George.
I'll take it, please.
Okay, it's a deal.
Commissioner Malone, might I add just one item?
Absolutely, Kate.
Wonderful, thank you. Good morning, Kate Porcha, Corvallis Benton County Economic Development Office. Just a quick update, we found out late last night that our partners at Community Lending Works received their round four money, and as you may recall, round four is actually the now lenient round that we think businesses will actually be able to take great advantage of. It lessens the restrictions that had previously been in place. So I wanted to make you all aware, this morning, we are pushing out pretty hot and heavy to all of our partners information about this. We also have round three money available, which at this point uses a subtraction formula, which we fear is going to miss many, many businesses. So I kind of, since you guys have been along for the ride on this, I wanted to let you know that the plan is to advertise that there is money available, to advertise it with the lower qualification level with the round four, which is going to be a first-come, first-served basis. Then behind the scenes, our partners at Community Lending Works are actually going to sort the applications. So if we have folks who've either received very minimal or no PPP or idle, they will be kind of channeled over to utilize the round three money that is now open, and everybody else will go with the round four. While all of this is going on, we continue to push up at the legislative level to make round three monies be less stringent, because again, we are seeing that these funds just aren't getting out to the doors to the businesses that need them. So if you know of businesses that can utilize this money, please send them to our website or send them to me. It will be, again, I want to make sure, it's going to be a first-come, first-served basis. We needed to do it that way because Business Oregon had structured it to where when communities get through their money and run out, you can actually go back and ask for additional funding. So as a reason, we agree that we would handle it on a first-come, first-served basis. We are really sensitive, though, about the outreach to our minority businesses, so our team is working on preparing the press release in Spanish, and then that we will make actual phone calls to the minority businesses that we've been in contact with to really try and reach them and let them know that these funds are there and that they need to get on and apply as soon as possible. So that's my update this morning. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Well, on the round three money, I'm assuming there's quite a few counties that are in the same position, so do you feel like you're making progress at the, with the legislature to loosen that up so we can actually get it out the door before the end of the year?
It's a tough question. We thought we were, in fact, we thought we had made all of the progress Friday before last, when it was, went in front of Governor's E-Board, but then Business Oregon's interpretation and what frankly Representative Lyra Lee's interpretation was that it would only apply to future rounds. It is unfortunate Business Oregon has been taking the stance, and in fact, our Finance Director took the stance with me on what was sort of a terse phone call, where they indicated that perhaps the issue was that communities and offices like ourselves weren't doing a good enough job reaching out, and he suggested that maybe we, you know, call some barber shops and beauty salons, and that that would help get the word out. And I explained to him that the issue was not outreach to businesses, and talked a little bit about all the different things we've done, but rather having funds that our businesses could actually utilize. So we continue to push on this, Commissioner Malone. I will let you know if we can use a little more of, at this point, we're trying to work the channels through the lobbyists at the Association of Oregon Counties and League of Oregon Cities and OEDA. Our goal is to see if we can bring it back to the governor's emergency board at their October 12 meeting to make it retroactive. Otherwise, you know, businesses just aren't getting these funds.
Okay. Who at AOC is leading this effort?
Oh, you know, I will have to look on that. I can tell you, I know at League of Oregon Cities is Mark Garce, their lobbyist, and I want to say at AOC, it is a woman, and her name escapes me at the moment, but I'd be happy to email you guys so you know who that is.
Great.
Might be Mallory Roberts.
Could be. I'll have to look, I apologize. We've been more directly involved with the League of Oregon Cities, that AOC signed on, as did, you know, with this initial, this letter that our coalition put together, that we had our county, Lane County, City of Beaverton, the organizations I already mentioned, the Native American Business Coalition. I mean, this was a diverse array of communities of different sizes in the metro area, outside the metro area. So to your point, Commissioner Malone, this is not an issue just for Benton County, right?
On the round, round four funding, what's the Benton County share of those funds?
And funny, I don't actually know that. Emily just calculated it yesterday. I am supposed to have an email in my inbox this morning to let us know, so how about this? I'll package that information in that same email. As soon as I know, I'll let you know. I will say, again, in terms of money, our round two, this is going way back, round two, folks could not have received any PPP or idle, but of the 75,000 that Community Lending Works had, in the end, we only got out 40,000 of that money. And I think you guys know, our team in coordination with others that have been helping, we've been calling businesses, we've been visiting businesses, I mean, we're trying to leave no stone unturned here, but, which is why we feel strongly that the issue is the structure of the program, not the outreach.
Yep. All right, well, thank you. Any other questions for Kate?
Thank you for continuing to push on this, Kate.
You bet, you bet. Happy to do it. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, we're running slightly behind schedule here, but next up, 5.2, discussion concerning coronavirus funding, and I think Mary Ottley is with us. There she is, turning her microphone on. Good morning, Mary.
Good morning, Commissioner. And I'm here today to talk to you about the funding we've received to date, and then ask for some conversation about what we can do to spend some of these funds that we've got. So it, direct your attention to the document that just has all the various funding sources we've received or been given notice. We have, all this money isn't in the house right now. However, as you can see, the total is over $6 million, almost $6.5 million. I just added the $47,000 that the court's office received for election. First, you know, organizing a safe and secure election administration, so there's an additional 47, 37,236 that's not on the sheet that we were told last week that elections will be receiving here shortly, which is CARES funding as well. But are there any questions about the types of funding we've received and what we can and can't do with it? I was hoping this summary kind of gets you an overview of where the funds are coming in and how we can spend them.
Mary, was the summary in our packet?
It should have been. Did you not receive it? It should have been attached to the agenda.
I do not recall.
Let me, just hang on a second.
Joe, should we add this discussion to the goal setting next week?
Commissioner, Mary should be ready for us to proceed with this momentarily, so I would say we go ahead and have the conversation today. We do need to get some feedback from the board because there are some timing issues that we are in agreement with the city on as it relates to continuing this discussion. So if we can at least have the initial conversation today, that would be helpful. If we need to follow up more next week on goal setting, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, the email just came with the information. Thank you, Mary, for sending that.
All right, so the one, the one, the first one I was talking about was the one that has the green bar across the top that just identifies the funding and the sources. And so now you have the correct one. There is the 47,000, it's the last entry.
So most of the dollars are, have restricted usages. Some of them are capital-only for small items, but we also have flexibility in terms of the second big bucket, the CARES Act dollars, correct? So that's really what we're talking about?
Right, and that's what I want to talk to you today about, is what to do with the CARES Act, because I wanted you to get a bigger picture of what was available. What we know coming in. The, on the second page, there's the, right now it says 155,000. We receive $1,100 for every positive COVID case, and so that number's going to grow as our cases grow, and that's where we, those are the funds we're using for the new contract trace, contact tracers. So that number will change over time.
So Mary, for those folks who may not have familiarity with this, can you go into a little bit more detail?
Of the, that particular fund be mine?
Yeah, actually, just drilling into what we're trying to accomplish today with the board.
Okay, well, what we're trying to accomplish today with the board is the $3.6 million and how to, what we might spend the money on between now and December 30th. So if you look at the second sheet that I sent you, once I figure out how to make this one go away, and share this one with you.
That's the Excel?
Yeah.
The Excel spreadsheet, yeah. It shows we've been awarded $3.6 million, and we have, through the end of September, we still have a remaining 1.4 million available, an unrequested fund. And I, the section down below, I'm showing you what the monthly expenses that we know of are going on. I don't have the 100 and 1/1/1. I don't have the 148,000 that Danielle was talking about here a few minutes ago for the unity shelters, so that'll be added to this, to this list as a known expenditure. We also put our heads together, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we're asking for funds to be reimbursed for individuals' time that are already being paid for by federal grants. And so, we did some calculations, so we're in the process of reducing each subsequent drawdown request for those salaries. So, we have to return like 330,000. We've already spent back 110. So, what we're doing is, as the total costs are calculated each month, we're reducing that until we have the 330,000 paid back.
Okay.
What we're here to talk about today is what, if you have any ideas about how to leverage our 1.4 million dollars that we haven't requested. So, probably it's about 100, probably a million dollars that's available for the project. Joe and I met with the City of Corvallis to see what they were doing. They wanted to coordinate with us as at all possible. And Joe, I didn't get any good direction from them as to what their plans were going forward. They are funding the construction of the micro shelters, so that's where the bulk of their money is going to at this time.
But that's.
One, a hundred, yeah.
That's not a huge bill.
Commissioners, the city, when we met with them, we were just really comparing notes the first time around. They didn't have any definitive concepts that they shared with us about how they would spend any of their remaining funds. And however, we agreed that we would both go off to our separate organizations and work over the next couple of weeks to identify potential ideas or ways in which each organization was willing to spend this money. And then we were going to come back together here in a couple of weeks with the city and bring those ideas for projects from both the city and the county to see if there was any alignment and any partnerships that might be either necessary or maybe an opportunity for us to look at pursuing. So, that's kind of what we're, the process that's currently underway. They've gone off to work with their organization and we're working with ours.
I can think of several things that would be relevant. One would be the childcare gap, and I know that any of the organizations that are currently providing childcare and school-age care, extended hours, are eating into their reserve funds because they can't charge the full cost of what it's actually costing them to provide that care to essential workers. So, for instance, the Corvallis Boys and Girls Club has a monthly deficit moving forward. That would help support many people in the community, and the way that they ask for support is typically through helping to provide scholarships to families so that the families can pay the cost of that service. I don't know if there are other providers in the community that are in similar situation as the Corvallis Boys and Girls Club, but anything that would help with that kind of care for children would help support families and keep people able to work because it's been such a challenge. The other is the topic brought up earlier, having some sort of warming shelter for the unhoused so that we can make sure that those that are unhoused have someplace to get out of the rain, get warm, stay dry, hopefully in a relatively non-congregate way. And then, of course, addressing the whole issue of having a legitimate place to park or camp, but that's definitely squarely in the city's wheelhouse in terms of figuring out the wheres and hows. And then, thirdly, I mean, I guess this is probably fourth, is the whole issue of economic development assistance and whether or not there's a need for less restrictive funds than the funds that are coming through the state at this point in time. I don't know what the real demand is. Kate might be able to tell us better how many people did receive PPP and IDL that might be able to keep people on their payroll and keep their doors open if only they had that additional boost.
You, the, and you, they're all very good. The warming shelter, if we're going to do that, we have to act fairly fast because we have to have these funds spent by December 31st. I don't know if Danielle still, if they have a way forward to make that happen in the next three months.
There have been a lot of discussions. I think that the main one has been about renting a large tent and outdoor heaters and, again, having some sort of supervision so that heaters don't become fire hazards. But, yeah, and then there's always the perpetual idea of using fairgrounds buildings.
Are there other ideas that you have in terms of how you'd like to see this money potentially spent?
The only thing I could think of, and the timeline I don't think works, but the discussion from AOC yesterday about hotel, motel, ones that aren't doing well, and apparently there's a fairly complete list, so I guess I would add that to the, to the list and knowing that it may not fit this less than three-month timeline.
The, I think that that's a great idea. One of the things that the government has decided is that any hotel, motel, or other facility that's purchased with CARES Act dollars for non-congregate shelter can then turn around and be used in the long term for permanent supportive housing. And so, that makes it really appealing because it's a long-term leverage element for the community and something that we've needed here in the county for a long time. There are more discussions going on, and there are a couple of ideas. So, I think that that is a discussion that I would love to see ramp up a little bit. I don't know whether there's an ability to commit funds as an option to purchase, for instance, that kind of thing where we could take a little longer, maybe get some capacity online. I don't know. It's well worth talking about.
Mary, did you hear that about the, how much, how much of a commitment can we be started on the progress project and have some money down on a property, but maybe not have it completely done by December 31st? Any notion if that would qualify for these funds?
That's questionable. My understanding is it needs to have been something that's tangible by December 30th. I will double check with the state to see if they would allow us to make a down payment, that type of thing, I guess, with the consideration of how we would pay for it after we make a down payment. But I will, I will look into that to see if it's possible. I thought, Commissioner, I was sure that there was other funding sources for the purchase of these besides, I mean, it's probably CARES funding, but it's not dedicated to the county.
Correct.
Is that correct?
There have been various discussions, and, but so far, there's not a lot of clarity. The ESG funding that comes through Oregon Housing and Community Services is the bucket that is being discussed now, that's not CARES Act dollars, or part of it is, but not all of it, and it doesn't have the same time constraints. But the funding round through Oregon Housing and Community Services isn't until something like March of 2021, which is well past the timing and need for non-congregate shelter during COVID this winter right now. So, I think there's a lot of politicking still going on at the state level, and I can definitely connect you with others that are having this conversation if you, if we want to pursue this further. I'd be happy to do that.
I think we really need to get some representation from the city and really target this because I think it's going to take monies from both the city and the county if we were to do this. When you look, I have seen a draft list, Commissioner Malone, that you spoke about regarding hotels or motels that are potentially interested in selling. There are one or two in our area. But I do think, you know, from a political standpoint, commissioners, I would encourage you to really try and leverage AOC and our legislators because some of this can be impractical in terms of being able to spend the money by December 31st. I don't know if AOC is trying to work with both state and federal legislators or not because it would certainly help if we didn't have that looming deadline, especially for some more of these larger acquisitions, which this would certainly be one.
I don't know whether the HEROES Act that's been passed by the House removes that December 30th deadline for spending CARES Act dollars. That would be a really important question to ask.
Yeah.
Because that, we're not alone. Everyone knows that this is not going to go away as of December 30th. We're still going to have all of these COVID-related challenges and problems pressing needs, so.
So, we'll certainly take direction from the commissioners and get to work on whatever priorities you have, but that's one area that you could potentially help as well.
Yes.
Is that looming deadline.
Well, and I think the deadline was put in place in March, and that sounded like a way off and plenty of time, and then reality hits and it may not, just like Kate Porches earlier, a discussion of limits on economic development funding just may have made sense when it was passed, and then reality comes up and so, well, we, we can't find, we have a bunch of need, but not enough people, not enough businesses qualify. And so, these things that were kind of hastily legislative, definitely need some tweaking and that just, so we can put that on our legislative to-do list and see if there's any, if Congress can actually function to help this. But, do we have anything else for Mary?
I have a question for you. Are you at all interested in talking to Benton Community Foundation about more money for nonprofits?
Yes.
Yes, that's definitely a good option, and the Community Foundation has been having a series of meetings with nonprofit groups and others about urgent need, so they are well-positioned to know what those needs are. They've been looking at childcare, the needs of schools, the needs in the court system for court advocates, so they have done a pretty deep dive.
Well, and the advantage of those folks is they do this every day, and it's not starting from zero and trying to figure out how to help people. So, I think that's a great suggestion, especially that we've already done one contribution to their, to the foundation.
And that also is another way of allowing us to commit the funds and.
And Commissioner Malone, may I ask a question also, and I apologize if this was brought up, I had to take a phone call. Joe and I have had a conversation too about exploring the CARES money in ways that could supplement the Business Oregon money to help businesses. My team has been exploring some kind of outside-the-box ideas with the goal of exploring these perhaps jointly as a city-county type of item, and I guess maybe I just wanted to check in and see if that was something that you thought we were even exploring that we could bring back some ideas to you.
I did bring that up while you were otherwise occupied, Kate.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I think that it's definitely worth having on the table.
Thank you, and I apologize.
No problem.
I have a question for Kate as well. You know, are we speaking primarily for Corvallis, Kate, or are we looking at opportunities outside of Corvallis?
No, definitely outside. In fact, I'm always very sensitive to that also because, you know, the city has CARES Act money that we could use inside, so one of the ideas I had is if there are programs that could benefit folks countywide, let me, this is just an off-the-cup example, some communities are hiring bilingual lawyers to help our minority businesses negotiate with landlords, which is really a need right now. And so, in my mind, we maybe set it up where the city contributes a portion of that money for businesses within the city, and then the county contributes a portion for businesses out in the county. Or, you know, again, some sort of proportionate setup where both entities are committing, yeah.
I think that's a really good point. Thank you. Thank you for keeping your eye on that.
You bet. No, we'll put together some ideas and bring that back for you all to consider. Thank you.
Great. Do you have anything else for us, Mary?
No, no, I think you've given us some ideas, and we'll hopefully be back to you shortly in the next couple of weeks with some concrete ideas of what to do with the funding.
Okay.
Great. I mean, I realize the clock is ticking here, and so, it's, we need to get on this, and so get back to us at your, as soon as you have some more detail.
Yeah, it's a good problem to have, you know, how to spend money and do it, you know? It's an interesting question that I really never had to address before, but yeah, we'll get back to you. Thank you.
Anything else on this topic?
I look forward to the next discussions. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. All right. We're almost back on schedule here, or closer. Item number six, the consent calendar.
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, item 7.1, discussion and decision to approve the 2020-2022 coronavirus emergency supplemental funding subgrant. And we have Justin Carley from parole and probation, I saw him there earlier. Are you, are you ready, Justin?
Yes, Commissioner, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Again, my name is Justin Carley from Benton County Parole and Probation Office, Division of the Sheriff's Office, and I wanted to just essentially be in a position to answer any questions that the board may have. These are funds that are coronavirus emergency supplemental funds that the State Department of Corrections, Community Corrections Division of the DOC applied for on behalf of the counties. And they have since reached out to, and they initially requested in May, $388,000, and they have since reached out to all of the individual counties with their specific allocation, and then that allocation is basically the same allocation that we use for our community corrections funding, our grant and aid dollars. So, the amount for Benton County is $4,870, and there's some specific uses, as you can imagine, for these funds, and they were laid out in the, in the agenda checklist as well. So, I just essentially wanted to just be in a position where I can answer any questions if the board had it.
So, Justin, these funds are mostly to help house people that are coming back out of the state prison system and into the community, correct?
Correct, but not specifically just limited to folks that are released from the public corrections, but also locally as well.
Excellent. And I think I noticed in the agreement that it is backdated so that it can cover expenses that we've incurred housing folks already this year?
Correct, yes. And so, we're going to be able to. And so we're going to be able to go back and utilize those funds for that specific timeframe. But the project start date is actually January 20th, 2020. The end date is January 19th, 2022. So it doesn't quite match up with our community corrections timeline, but so be it.
Yeah, well, I'm grateful to have the funds. Have you been able to house additional incremental people with the dollars so far?
Yeah, it's been, I mean, these funds are very well timed just because of where we are right now with our, with our housing needs. And so this was definitely good news at that director's meeting when the Department of Corrections was able to present that they had requested these dollars and had been awarded the grant. And another $4,870 sometimes doesn't seem a lot to folks in the bigger picture of things, but for this specific instance here, yeah, this will, this will serve us well, so.
Excellent.
Any other questions for Justin? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Okay. I would move to approve the 2020-2022 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Subgrant Agreement, IGA number 6033 between the State of Oregon and Benton County.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. I appreciate the background information, Justin, and I wish the money was more in proportion to how long the motion was, but like you say, it's helpful. So thank you.
Yes. Appreciate it. Thank you, Commissioner.
All right.
Thank you.
Next up, 7.2, Discussion and Decision to Approve an Order Authorizing the Weight Limit Posting on McFarland Bridge Road. And that is Michael Johnson? No.
Actually, good morning, Commissioners. It'll be me and Laurel doing the presentation today on this.
Even better.
Seems like they've been coming to you with a lot of bridge postings lately, huh?
Yep.
This one's a little different in that it is less than 20 feet long. And so it's not actually on ODOT's regular schedule to do inspections on and to actually do load ratings and all of that on it. It's all on us, the bridges that are shorter than 20 feet. And so this one's only 17 foot long. We were going out there and doing kind of a maintenance inspection and thought that there were some issues with scour. And so Mike Johnson thought, well, because he went under the bridge and was there when a truck was going by, and he was like, oh, wait a minute, this doesn't feel quite right. So he went back to the office and did a load rating and determined that in reality, it's really not sufficient for just regular freight loads at this point. And so we went ahead and posted it because, you know, I'm cautious as an engineer, I would rather not have the freight going over the bridge when we know that it really probably couldn't support it over a long period of time. And so we posted it as an emergency on September 17th and scheduled some improvements to be done to the substructure, but it still won't bring it quite up to standard for regular freight. And so it's something that the engineering group, as well as the road crew, will look at, what do we need to do to actually bring it up to standard or whether we just need to completely replace it, put it on our list of bridges to replace. So that's really what's happening with this. The, there is a slight, there are alternate routes available for freight traffic. And so what we do is when those requests come in, we go ahead and divert them to another location. And so it's not a huge issue. I guess there's a dairy out there that is probably impacted by it. And I know that Mike has been in conversations with those folks as well as the road crew to figure out what we need to, what our next steps are. Any questions?
Well, I hope when Michael was underneath that he was slightly to the side of the bridge as the.
Yeah, we have conversations about that too, safety, yes, absolutely.
I have another question, and this is maybe, maybe more a suggestion for our next departmental meetings with you, and that's the railroad crossing on Ninth Street in Philomath. I know that.
Oh.
Are you, are you there?
Yes, Ninth Street?
Yeah.
I thought you were going to say nineteenth. That's pretty rough.
Maybe it is nineteenth. I'm turned around now. No, it could be nineteenth, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I want to talk about both of them, actually.
Okay, sure.
One of them is really bad shape.
Yeah.
Okay, so if I understand correctly, the next steps are basically for your team internally to do an assessment as to whether or not there can be repair work done to bring this bridge up to standard or whether it's more cost efficient, cost effective to replace it? Yeah.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah. Okay. I don't have any further specific questions. I'd be happy to provide a motion.
Okay.
I would move to adopt the order authorizing the weight limit posting on McFarland Road Bridge over Muddy Creek Overflow, County Bridge Number 45500-10, effective September 17th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
And I applaud Mike Johnson for his care in looking at these bridges.
Yes, absolutely.
It's nice to see you. It's been a long time.
Yeah, I know.
All right. Thanks, Laurel, for the update there, so.
Yes, thank you so much.
All right. Next up, my favorite, number eight, other, where we have an opportunity to kind of update each other on what we've been working on or questions that have come up.
I have one. I did get a request, again, in a fairly circuitous route the other day, from C.W. Nelson, our Veteran Service Officer, that had been forwarded from Eric Nieman in Philomath. As you may know, they have a new committee at Philomath City Council on Inclusion, and they're putting together a fantastic lecture series on race, diversity, inclusion. And they, this series includes the speaker that they would like to invite in November, who is a veteran, Colonel Greg Gadston, that has some personal connections to Philomath through Philomath residents that know him and is a black decorated veteran, double amputee. So he represents the need for inclusivity on so many different levels. And he is a regular speaker on the circuit, but because he's a regular speaker, he also comes with a fee. And he has a speaker's fee. He works through a speaker's bureau. And Mayor Nieman was going to work with the Colonel because he knows him personally to see what he could do to reduce that. But the City of Philomath was wondering if various different entities would help contribute to the cost of that speaker fee.
Do you have any idea what the fee is?
The total speaker fee is $5,500. And so they were really hoping that various entities might share in that, and they were also hoping to, that they could negotiate a lower fee. So this is just in the nature of a heads up. We don't have a formal request on the table at this point, but the date would be timed, I think it's just before Veterans Day in November for this particular lecture. The last, the first lecture of their series was extremely well attended and viewed. It's been viewed more than 14,000 times on Facebook, so it's an opportunity. So that's all.
Okay. I'd be curious to see what, if they kind of do a general or a specifically targeted topic to, like, in terms of it focused on veterans, if it's focused on broader community, is that, you know?
They've done a mixture and so far. The first presentation was the Organization of Black Pioneers.
Okay.
This one coming up this Thursday, I'm sorry, I don't recall the precise speaker, but they have, they're scheduled figured out through the end of this year, and they're hoping to continue that speaker series into the next year. The other honorarium that have been requested have been very small or not, or no honorarium at all. This is kind of an anomaly.
Okay.
Commissioner, so you'll be receiving a formal request, it sounds like, at some point?
I would anticipate that to be the case. I have spoken to Mayor Nieman and I know that the council of governments that manages our Veteran Services Office is also contemplating putting in a little bit of money, but I think that it would help if we were able to say, yes, we are interested and willing in a, to make a small contribution in light of our interests in equity, diversity, and inclusion. And given that this community series is, has really become much broader than Philomath in scope, so we can be as proactive as we want to be.
Looking for some direction or action from the board today, or this is just more of a heads up?
It could go either way. If we, knowing that we do have some flexible funds, I would be happy to make a motion to allocate, say, $1,000 towards that honorarium on behalf of equity, diversity, and inclusion in honoring veterans.
I would certainly second that.
That was an official motion?
That was a motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We will work with the.
Commissioner, what we would need is an invoice sent to Finance, may get to Mary Ottley's attention. And I will make, Mary is on the line right now, so she just heard the action that you
Okay.
But in order for us to forward that contribution to them, we would need something in writing, i.e. an invoice or letter with an invoice attached.
I will follow up. Thank you.
Okay, I've got a couple, were you finished, Zan?
Yes.
Okay. I've got a couple things to go over. Last week, I have a weekly call with Leah Horner from the Governor's Office, talked quite a bit about testing and, just like I asked Charlie this morning, there's, we ought to get names connected with some of these tests, but trying to get in a position where we're not so passive and reacting, oh, there's a case, well, we should do something about that versus doing enough testing kind of along the trace study where we're going out into the community and checking schools or specific areas where we think there might be a problem and especially heading into the late fall/winter months, just being more proactive, I think I would, that would make me feel a lot more comfortable than just being in this reactive mode that we've been in for almost seven months. And so I guess, like Charlie says, the state's trying to figure out how to use the technology. I heard something about being able to do an additional 50,000 to 60,000 tests per week and get the results back in, while you're still at the doctor's office, 15 minutes or something like that. So it seems like we've been hearing about this for months, maybe it's actually here. Back to our other emergency, the wildfire council that the governor stood up, I think, met for the first time yesterday to try to figure out about rebuilding in the fire-affected areas and cities where we heard about water systems being destroyed, communication systems gone. And so some communities like Mill City and Gates have significant hurdles to getting back to anywhere close to normal. Also had my monthly meeting with Mayor Corvallis and I can't recall any specifics from that, but just like Joe was talking about earlier, coordinating efforts with our partners is more important than ever, and I think we've got a good working relationship with the city and intend to do what I can to see if that continues. Speaking of partners, we had a virtual meeting with, that was called by OSU last Friday, talking about the cahoots model of Eugene and Lane County of having more tools for people in, having crises, mental health issues, and not just having the law enforcement folks try to handle all our problems. And I think it was a nice initial discussion, and I think the goal was to get a working group stood up on this effort and try to identify what the needs are and potential funding sources, which is always a challenge. And then yesterday, we had the Region 5, which is Lynn, Benton, and Lane Counties chaired by Commissioner Ogierow in a wonderful four-hour meeting. But the theme there was, one, introducing a lot of new AOC staff that will have specific areas where they're working, especially coordinating with the legislature and trying to identify priorities and get as ready as we can for the upcoming legislative session, whether it's a special session after the November 3rd voting or the regular long session, which starts in earnest in early February. But it's nice to see that AOC has filled some holes in their efforts. So, Annabelle?
Continue, I just have a separate topic.
Unless there's any questions, but Zan did a nice job of running a virtual meeting with lots of moving parts and I think that it went well, and that's, that's the best we can do at this point.
I was honored to be called Commissioner Hadamio a couple of times.
Yeah, yeah. I took the hit for you.
And I think unless there's any question.
Yeah, I have one more item. We were talking about a fire situation. I think it'd be a good time to have a conversation around our firewise work, and since this is a hot topic right now, see where we are in the county, what do we need to improve on, and, you know, those kinds of things. From personal experience, after having taken off a cedar roof that was really in bad shape, it was damn scary knowing that that was there. So I think, you know, it's, it's time that we have that conversation and not wait till another fire season when things can go. and not wait till another fire season when things can grow really bad.
Well, our Community Wildfire Protection Plan is also due for its regular update.
Yeah, it is.
I know that there's a real appetite in the community to take a hard look at that.
Yeah.
And this whole question of rebuilding and building standards is going to be a very hot topic, no pun intended, moving forward. Because I know everyone wants to get back to home. But on the other hand, if this type of fire becomes the new normal, rebuilding with lower standards is not going to do anyone any good. So there are some really big questions that the legislature is going to have to address this year.
I agree. I agree.
So to address that concern, staff met last week. I brought community development together with Public Works, with Emergency Management, and dusted off our CWPP.
Good.
And talked about what direction do we need to go with updating that. We also have local interest in evacuation routes, different evacuation routes. And so we had a initial meeting that we pulled together on this particular topic. We're teeing up probably for a work session with the board, most likely in early December. Could possibly be in November, but at this point, I can't guarantee that. There's some background work that staff is doing. And so we will be coming to you sometime between November and December to talk to you more fully about our CWPP, the plans for updating that. And also, because we're at the front end of our budget process, if the county is going to provide any funding for additional evacuation routes, now is the time to begin that conversation and/or money for the Firewise program. It doesn't have to be just for evacuation routes.
Right.
It could certainly be for other measures that can be taken to make neighborhoods firewise. So I just wanted, in response, Commissioner, just to let you know that we have started that dialogue.
Good. Good.
Well, and along the evacuation routes and practice, I think it was in early May, the Skyline West self-organized practice evacuation. And I think that went fairly well. And those folks, I'm not sure if the new road is finished yet or not, but one of those districts where there's one road. And you imagine emergency vehicles trying to get in and people trying to get out. And you can easily see that maybe nobody is able to get to where they need to get to. That brings up a concern that we've done some practice on emergencies, but the main goal was not to inconvenience anybody. And I think with some of the, my thinking got pushed along with the Paradise, California example, and they, they had some practice and, but it wasn't anywhere close to what they needed when the fire, the emergency came. And I think we're going to have, at some point, step up our game a little bit as far as what we call practice. And that, there's no substitute for getting some experience and getting out of the house quickly with your, your go-bag of things that you, that you need for a few days or maybe longer. But the, my other point along these lines is, and it's, seems like it's been a while in the works, but statewide OSU Extension has, I believe, about six positions for fire mitigation. That may not be quite the right term.
Education, outreach, applied research.
One, and I don't know if, Rich Riggs from OSU Extension made a brief discussion. They, and it might, might just be South Willamette Valley. But I think as of the first or yesterday, they actually had somebody in place as one of these five or six positions, statewide positions. So timely would have been nice if more of those folks had been able to get things going. But at least we have something, some help, another tool to kind of go along with the ODF Firewise efforts. And Extension has a, has a long history of being able to get information, best practices out, out to the community. So, anything else under other? Seeing none, I will, oh, oh, almost forgot. I will close the board meeting. And we have four service district items to approve. So I will now open County Service District for Library Services. Are there any comments from the public? All right. We have a two-item consent calendar.
I move the approval of the two items on the consent calendar.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any other business for this board? Vance, you look worried.
I know. I'm now paying attention.
Okay.
Well, you've been sleeping up until now, huh?
Other work.
All right. I will close the Library Service District meeting. And open up the Agricultural Extension Services County Service District Governing Board meeting. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, I'll move on to item number two, consent calendar. Two items, and I should have done this on the first one, but one of the items is reappointing Jackie Thorstenus to the, to their Budget Committee. I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is there any other business for the OSU Extension? Hearing none, I will close that meeting. Moving right along, LC Human Services County Service District Governing Body. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to item two, the consent calendar. In this case, we are reappointing Deb Cottington to the Budget Committee and then approval of the June 16th minutes. I would entertain a motion.
I would move the consent calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have, before we move on to the next service district, I think I'd like to hear an update eventually, you know, doesn't have to be immediately, on how things are working out at LC since we had a few bumps down the road.
Okay.
And a winding road at that. It's, it's a winding road to get there.
All right. Anything else for LC?
No.
Hearing none, I will close that meeting. And last, but definitely not least, is the 911 Emergency Communications Services County Service District Governing Board. Thank you, Vance, for that nice title.
I do that just to tongue-tie you.
How'd I do? How'd I do, Vance?
You, you crossed the threshold. You'd now be able to turn the chairship over in January to somebody else who can then practice.
Okay. Are there any comments from the public? Hearing none, one of the items on the consent calendar is appointing Robin Delamora to the 911 District Budget Committee. And then approval of the June 16th meeting minutes.
And move approval of the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any other business for the 911 Service District? Hearing none, I will close that meeting. And I, unless there's something else, I think we are finished for today.
Thank you.
I was chuckling about the...